Interesting.
It's all okay, it's got a secret trash. I'll sit this time.
Okay councillors, please stand. I would like to welcome all councillors, members of the executive, members of the public that have joined us on the live stream and those watching via the replay. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. The prayer please, give him a fee.
It was me, we vouch for you lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you, please sit councillors. All councillors have attended, so we do not have any apologies.
Correct.
Confirmation of minutes, councillors have all read the minutes, you have a move please, if the minutes are true and they're clear, we close on. Lead councillor McPhee, second councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour, unanimously, thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest, do we have any declarations? We have no declarations of conflict of interest, thank you. Receptions and reading of petitions, memorials, joint letters and deputations, Mr Seer, do we have any?
No, none presented for this meeting, Mr May.
Thank you. Now, we do have public questions, can I have a mover to look at we're going to, just spend three minutes.
We've just spent ten minutes.
Thank you councillor McPhee and a seconder, councillor Benham, all in favour, thank you unanimously, public questions. Now, question one from Elizabeth Miller. Do the increasing number of corporate, private and pilot training aircraft, including aerodynamics, Pearson's, AAA and Oxford, who are using our airport as a training ground, pay council for landings and touch and goes?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I thank Ms Miller for her question. Council does not have any arrangements in place for the charging of usage fees at either Swan Hill or Robbenvale aerodromes. Council is monitoring the usage of both aerodromes and will be considering the question of the ongoing operation and of the capital investment into the Swan Hill aerodrome in particular, in the near future. The Swan Hill aerodrome has until recently been an aerodrome of low utilisation and the administration burden and the capital costs of the equipment in capturing airport usage and then collecting airport usage fees really hasn't stacked up compared to the investment required, so council will review usage in the coming months.
Thank you. Question two, from Elizabeth Hocking. What did the CEO, Mr McLendon, mean in his interview on ABC Radio in relation to the flight school by, 'The door is not closed', can council assure us that it will not continue to pursue an international flight school for Swan Hill?
Again, I thank Ms Hocking for her question. The Australian Aviation Alliance has withdrawn from discussions with council in relation to the establishment of a flight school at the Swan Hill aerodrome. There's no intention to recommence these negotiations as there's significant commercial differences between the two entities. At today's council meeting you'll see in the agenda that councillor McKay has moved a notice of motion, the council withdraw its offer to enter into a heads of agreement with Australian Aviation Alliance, and it states their ABN, to negotiate the establishment of a flight school at the Swan Hill aerodrome. So this motion, if carried later in today's meeting, effectively ends any discussion between the Swan Hill Rural City Council and the Australian Aviation Alliance with respect to the establishment of a flight school in Swan Hill. There's no intention at this time to recommence those negotiations, nor is there any basis for which council could re-enter those negotiations. That's not to say that council or any future council could not pursue similar opportunities in future.
Question three, from Margaret Sarah. Will council commit to holding a full public consultation process before signing a lease with a potential flying school?
And I thank Margaret Sarah for her question. Council is not progressing with a lease with the Australian Aviation Alliance, as stated in an earlier answer to a question, they have withdrawn from negotiations. The Australian Aviation Alliance have advised council that they have withdrawn from the negotiations and council and McKay at this meeting has a notice of motion, which I've just referred to in the previous answer. So council's discussions with the Australian Aviation Alliance have effectively ceased and so no public consultation is required at this time.
Question four, also from Margaret Sarah. Will council commit to obtaining an independent cost benefit analysis and environmental impact study before signing a lease with any proposed flying school?
Once again, thank you for the question. As council is not proceeding with negotiations and discussions with the Australian Aviation Alliance in relation to the establishment of a flight school at the Swan Hill aerodrome, no further work will be done on the cost benefit analysis or environmental impacts of such a proposal. We had engaged a suitable consulting resource to assist with the development of a report detailing the costs and the benefits of this proposal, but given that the negotiations have now concluded, I've decided that it's prudent to save the cost of that work involved in undertaking the study and so the work has been cancelled, cancelled, sorry. No work has been done on the environmental impacts of the establishment of a flight school and this work would have been undertaken as negotiations developed, but again, as negotiations have now ceased, no further work will be done in relation to this matter.
Question five A, from Shay Stronem. Regarding conflict of interest, if a councillor had a family member who owned land adjoining the airport, would it be a pecuniary conflict of interest for that councillor to be present for a discussion about a business that could lead to airport expansion and purchase of that land? And five B, what would be the penalty if that was not declared?
Thank you Shay for this question and, and look, the answer to this question is a complex one. The Victorian Local Government Act was amended a number of years ago to provide a very prescriptive definition of conflict of interest. The conflict of interest provisions are quite detailed and define specifically the classes of interests that are to be considered as a conflict of interest and also provides definitions as to what term family member means and others. And so under the circumstances that you describe in your question Shay, there's a couple of issues to be dealt with. It would be necessary for the family member to be sufficiently close to the councillor to fit the definition of family member, so this would include typically father, mother, brother, sister etcetera, it would not include cousins. Secondly, the councillor would need to know that the family member owned the land in question, which could reasonably be expected to be the case in respect of close family members. It's not usual that a councillor would know the financial interests of all of their cousins however, and so needs to be a close family member to fit the definition. There would also, for the conflict of interest to arise, there would need to be a direct connection between the matters being discussed and the potential for the airport expansion and a likelihood of increasing the value of the land in question. So a distant future potential would not pass the test of a conflict of interest. If a conflict of interest is proven, the penalty for such a conflict available to either the councillor co-conduct panel, I'll say it again, sorry, to either the councillor conduct panel or to a magistrate, as prescribed in the Local Government Act, but are quite broad in nature, they range from counselling to suspension from office to criminal charges depending on the nature of the conflict that's proven. So, a complex issue, Mr May.
Thank you. Question six is from Karen Mitchell. Aviation projects was engaged by Swan Hill Rural City Council to facilitate a workshop to discuss Swan Hill and Robbenvale aerodromes, especially in relation to the benefits of completing a master plan. It is unclear as to what, if any, community engagement was involved in this workshop and if the community was even considered to be a stakeholder. Question, what progress, if any, has council made in developing master plans for Swan Hill and Robbenvale aerodromes and how does council propose to engage these communities in developing plans?
Alright, thank you Ms Mitchell for the question. Council completed a Swan Hill aerodrome master plan in 2010, I think, it was close, it was around that time anyway, but has not done any long-term planning for the Robbenvale aerodrome. In the past 12 months, council has reviewed the Swan Hill aerodrome master plan and has been working towards gathering together sufficient funds to undertake the infrastructure upgrades necessary to maintain the aerodrome in an operational condition. Council consulted with aerodrome users in January of this year and has since developed up a suite of projects, excuse me Mr Mayor, a suite of projects which includes runway strengthening, strengthening of taxiways and works to provide for additional hangar facilities amongst other improvements to the aerodrome. These works will be discussed with council within the next few weeks and will then be discussed with aerodrome users and then the broader Swan Hill community.
Question seven, from Dr Jackie Kelly. Does council acknowledge that the avgas fuel used by some small planes such as Sessnus contains lead and is a threat to human health? What measures would be put in place to ensure no damage from lead emissions if an industrial scale pilot training school was established? Would council refer any business development application or lease proposal for a mass pilot school to a third party referral authority like the Health Department to ensure the threat of lead contamination was considered?
Again, I thank Dr Kelly for her question and an interesting question. I do understand that avgas fuel used by small piston internal combustion engines which are found in small planes does contain lead. I'm also aware that work has been done to produce unleaded avgas, but the we, the we as not only Australia but worldwide are a long, long way away from being able to achieve that. It's really driven by the fact that these engines require a high octane to operate efficiently and lead is an additive that's added to make sure that the engines aren't damaged. I'm also, sorry, so we're a long way away from seeing such a fuel being readily available. So airborne lead emissions are certainly a threat to human health and I think that's been well proven and particularly to children. This is the reason that petrol in Australia and pretty much across the entire world has now moved to unleaded fuel and most of our petrol fleet are running on that. So Dr Kelly's question asks about seeking third party advice before considering a lease to a pilot school at the Swan Hill aerodrome. Now, as previously stated, council is no longer in discussions for the establishment of a flight school at the Swan Hill aerodrome and pending the outcome of the notice of motion contained in today's agenda, the matter will probably be at a completion. To the bigger question of the impact on health and environment from the, from any use of the airport, I would certainly, it would certainly be prudent for council to seek advice from all reputable sources of information before making any formal and final decisions on such a venture. Yes.
Thank you. Question eight is also from Dr Jackie Kelly, representing the Safe Swan Hill Serenity Action Agreement Incorporated. And it's in five parts. In the current budget 2021, council has allocated $3.68 million to airport upgrade plus recently received another $1.2 million for its airport. Part one, is this money for both Swan Hill and Robbenvale airports and how will it be divided up? Two, how can the community be assured the multi-million dollar upgrade work plan for Swan Hill Airport are not being done to enable a future international pilot training school to set up here? Three, have AAA or any other entity bought an existing Swan Hill Flying School licence? Would council be informed of such a transaction if it had taken place? Four, does council see Swan Hill being an aviation hub with businesses such as an industrial scale pilot training school? And five, if so, does council consider this compatible with Swan Hill currently being the Murray Mallie Food Bowl agriculture hub?
Thank you again for the question. The money's provided in council's budget and the recent grant from the Regional Airport Fund has been provided for upgrade and improvement of the Swan Hill aerodrome. The works being proposed for the Swan Hill aerodrome have not yet been finalised, but I did allude to what is being considered in my previous answer. And funding arrangements, including the application for the grant, remain quite fluid to ensure the council can use these funds for the best outcome of the Swan Hill community. None of the works proposed will be to establish a flight school at the Swan Hill aerodrome. They will be to ensure that the ongoing operation of the aerodrome is maintained so that it can service the needs of the Swan Hill community and its economy. And air travel to and from Swan Hill is becoming increasingly important to our business community. Part three of the question asks about the business activities of the Australian Aviation Alliance. Now, I'm not aware, Mr Mayor, that the Australian Aviation Alliance has purchased any Swan Hill flying school licences, but probably nor would I be, there would be no need for that business to disclose any such transactions. Council and the community have over a number of decades invested heavily into the Swan Hill aerodrome and this council intends to maintain and improve the assets at the aerodrome. There's been no discussion about an aviation hub, I'm a bit unclear as to what that might mean, perhaps different things to different people. However, council does see that the Swan Hill aerodrome is being vital to improving the connectivity of this community to the rest of the region. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Seer. Now, that completes question time. Can I have a mover that we resume to the notice please? Lead councillor McPhee, second councillor Benham, all in favour, unanimously. Section B reports, item B 20.30, Swan Hill Rural City Council Youth Strategy, Mr Mayers please.
Thank you Mr Mayor and councillors. This report presents the Youth Strategy 2020-2025, which is council's third youth strategy since the inception of the programme in 2008/9 for adoption. This compared to some other strategies such as the early and middle years plan that was released, was adopted by council a couple of months ago. This one is very focused on what services council could and should focus on with its youth services. So, very high level of engagement across the community and we're very pleased to see an increase in the amount of engagement with the 19 to 25 age bracket, which is usually a very tough nut to crack with getting feedback from people. You can see there in the report a number of things that young people have found important for living in the area and what they see as important and obviously that's elaborated on in the plan and also the data, so the two reports, the actual strategy and the data report. There are seven main focus areas which might sound ambitious, but a lot of them are common sense and already direct what we do with our youth support services programme, but I draw your attention to the points five, six and seven, advocacy and planning. The council youth programme has been held in very high regard outside of the region and indeed at the statewide level and the data that was collected during the production of this document from all the consultations is also being used by the state government in the development of the council, of the council, of the state government's first youth policy. So that's very interesting and particularly with that focus on the 19 to 25s. And also because we have so much data on what's important to 19 and 25, so those who are out of the, potentially definitely out of the school system, potentially into higher education or work or apprenticeships, we want to focus on them and also have a stronger focus on our outlying areas particularly Robbenvale and Manangatang. And there's a fair bit of work that's happening in that area already and that's been reinforced by the feedback from everyone. The consultation, as usual, all three of the youth strategies that we've been involved with have had very high numbers of feedback and over 1,100 young people, parents, service providers and community members completed surveys, attended groups, provided written submissions, all sorts of things. So, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to present the Youth Strategy 2020 to 2025 for council consideration for adoption.
Thank you Mr Mayers. Questions councillors? Yes councillor Johnson.
Mr Mayers, just referring to the child safety standards, is there an age bracket that they actually relate to or does it go to the 0 to 25s?
It goes up to adulthood, up to 18, 19 year olds, but we also, but there's record keeping requirements within the child safe standards that apply for beyond that. So if there are any interactions with young, with children and young people, records may have to be kept for longer, so it's very relevant to this, to this area.
Yeah, so we were referring to Kelly early on in the strategy, child safety standard number seven, is, should we be kind of saying what that is in the report or, I realise it's seen more of an internal document, so we technically should know what that is, but my understanding was there's something like 120 recommendations, then seven or 12 or something that came out of that, so do we need to identify perhaps what that standard is?
Standard seven is almost the, the top is enough to crack as far as the child safe standards, it's the one that relates to ensuring that young people have a voice. That's obviously easier as young people get older, because this is primarily directing our, our youth programme, but yeah, it's probably something that we should have spelled out earlier in the document, but that's, that's fine, yeah.
Any further questions councillors? Yes.
I just wondered what the strategies are to now take this forward.
Three, Mr Mayor to councillor Leon, what happens now if this is adopted, if an annual work plan is developed, which guides our whole youth services programme? This has happened since the inception, since the last strategy, it's been an annual process. So those key elements, those seven elements drive what the priorities are and then we wrap around all the services and indeed set the budgets for it, for that programme based on that. And as a result, following adoption of this, we'll be allocating additional resources from within what we've got to, so we're reducing focus on some areas to put extra focus onto Manangatang and Robbenvale, because this is what the document is telling us, this is what the people are telling us. So, in, in short, this document sets the annual plan, so there'll be four or five plans that actually directly come out of this over the next few years and that's, that's reported on as well. We've in the past been asked to present outcomes, so you may have seen, you may be familiar where a report has come back to council on responses to the youth strategy, that's been a direct response to the work plan that was developed for that year, so.
Thank you, I think congratulations need to go to whoever's been involved in it, it's obviously been a really big process to go through and you've obviously consulted a lot of people, so well done.
Three, Mr Mayor to councillor, you know, I probably should have mentioned that Lisa McCoy from Local Logic Place was instrumental in driving the consultation, using the links within our youth programme, so yeah, we are very proud of the level of data that we got and the openness of people to share their concerns, thoughts, wishes and hopes, yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, Mr Mayers, the plan's actually 2020 to 2025, my initial concern was the new councillor coming in in 2020 for a four-year term and going to have no say in this, how do they, if they choose, have a say in it, can they?
Three, Mr Mayor to councillor McPhee, they can through development of work plans. If a councillor or any councillors have any questions, we actually encourage all councillors to increase their knowledge of whatever policies we have adopted and plans. So if a councillor or a group of councillors want a report through an assembly or to a council meeting, we can certainly do that and then we can adjust our work plan. Bearing in mind that what we are using as the guidance for this whole thing is actually from the community, this hasn't been developed by the officers, this has been from the community. No, this is a response to that, yeah. So councillors will have an input into the response if they so desire, yeah.
Any further questions councillors? No, if so, well, can I ask for a mover please? Councillor Johnson has further recommendation and seconded by councillor Benham. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Mr Mayers, congratulations again, obviously, you know, we're all very thrilled with the document and I think the fact that this is the third consecutive strategy shows that, you know, the documents are going to become more robust all the time and the outcomes can be flexible and as councillor McPhee says, the incoming council will still get a say on all of that as well, so well, congratulations and yeah, good work, look forward to the outcomes.
Any further speakers?
Congratulations again, I don't think we can say that enough. The development of youth strategies in the Swan Hill Rural City Council, I think over a long-term period, from me being a young person here to now, has made such a difference with young people growing up in the municipality. There was no such thing as a youth strategy when I was a young person and I think over the last 20 or 30 years, we can see the positivity and the changes in young people and the communication and the data that's captured in this document can be used for so many things, for communication, for developing the council plan going forward, so congratulations.
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes councillor McPhee?
Thanks Mr Mayor, look, I'd just like to add, as I say, you read, read the document, there's a lot of negativity through the document, concerns about mental health, there has increased in relation to the young people since 2015, there's twice as many young, young people concerned about their own mental health, I think that's an issue right throughout society. Look, overall, it's a great document and in the report, it's pleasing to see that the kids have got such a positive outlook, even though there are some negativities through this document. And just remember, 17% of our population is youth and they have our future, so losing plans are important, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McCaughan.
Congratulations also to council officers, I just think that, I'd like to make a comment that the key focus areas, healthy, participating, valued, prepared are wonderful, that's how we'd like, would like to be at age around 20. And also just to mention, yes, there is some negativity, but as I said with the youth document, it puts a challenge to all of us councillors to bear in mind about the disadvantage in our community and the lack of connectedness for some and look to really strengthen all our work in the coming years to improve those outcomes. We have a lot of great opportunities in our beautiful region and communities where people can feel engaged and connected is the big positive.
Thank you, any further speakers? Yes councillor.
I'd like to speak forward, yeah, once again, obviously, there we council said it now, congratulations, so, yeah, I've been on to a few of the Swan Hill youth meetings over the years and it's really a whole lot of that, the strategy and the strategy extends out a bit further, that the support that our local paper are getting through, not only this programme but all the schools, the student leadership groups and the other organisations involved, I guess enabling local paper to succeed in our community. And if you do have a read through this document and you're a parent that might not know what's going on or what the pressures are, it does hold on some of the areas that students are feeling the pressure and the need for assistance and that's what I was finding, you think of this strategy is working towards, to help them to address, but it's a small part of helping out our community, so congratulations once again and I look forward to some continued success in our community.
Any further speakers for, any against? There aren't any, councillor Johnson, would you wish to close the debate?
No, it's all there is, I think.
That's it, thank you, we'll then go to the vote, all those in favour, asked unanimously. And to councillors. Item B 20.31, prepares amendment to local law number two, 2007/8.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The, this report is around some amendments to the local law, which is the community local law number two. This local law largely governs the amenity and safety aspects of the municipality that aren't covered by other rules or regulations or legislation. The three areas where some amendments have been made are in relation to dangerous and unsightly land and around that is around the length of grass that you can have before the local law comes into force. Open air burning, where we're trying to cover the whole of townships, not just the residential parts of townships. And the moving of lives. And the moving of livestock, which is not to prohibit livestock movement by farmers within the municipality, but to regulate the moving of livestock from one area outside the municipality through the municipality to another location. So those clauses are discussed in detail in the, in the report, clause thirty, fifty three, fifty five and seventy nine. Also, what's been amended is the code of practice or footpath code of practice, I think it's called. Which has been amended to incorporate the legislative change with regards to the smoking in, in outdoor dining. It is the trading code of practice. So that has also been revised and has been updated into council's current, current standard of documentation. So it does look a little different to the old one if you've had a look. But the main incorporation is about the smoking in outdoor dining. So those four changes have been made and it's recommended that council commence the process to amend the local law. That involves public notification and allows the community to have input into those changes. And council will then consider that input before adopting the local law at a later date. So at this stage, it's about commencing the process to amend the local law. And that, that is the recommendation.
Thank you. Questions, councillors?
Question, thank you, Miss Fair. Oh, the, the screen. The, in regards to the open air burning, the letter that was sent from the municipal emergency management planning committee highlighted a bad burn off that occurred in an industrial estate. And asked for two things, I guess, to reinforce and updating the local laws. We've done a local law side here, but what processes are in place for, but these are local burn offs that happen within the no burn off areas. And just enforcing and swapping into the fire when they occur and given that most people burn from the weekend. And we don't have local laws, people working on weekends.
That's right. So certainly the local law gives us the power to enforce. We don't actually have to be there at the time. So normally if someone has started a fire, the normal course of action would be for people to ring the fire brigade. To, because theoretically it's a danger, to put it out. Fire brigade does work closely with our local laws team. As long as we've got evidence, we can still prosecute. Yeah, so we certainly can do that. Even if we're not, we, we don't put out the fires, we can't respond to that. But we can respond to, see what's been burned and prosecute. With, with the new local law.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, the feedback we've had from the community is someone's burning on a Saturday afternoon, they're burning a plastic dome as well. They call the fire brigade the triple zero, right, it says, it's not a threat to life, but they don't respond to fire brigade. So the fire brigade don't know about the call. So what do the residents that have been impacted at that time, what should they be doing? If they wanted to, well, obviously, they call triple zero, the fire brigade doesn't get paid out. So the fire continues to burn for the, you know, the next twelve hours and they can't do anything about it. What should they be doing? What can they do to make sure that it's followed up?
To, to follow it up on. They certainly can still ring our after hours number. So the one back in two thousand and eighteen certainly was rung. And certainly our local laws people, even though we didn't have this in place, went round and inspected. I think there was car tyres and a couple of other things involved at that time. And certainly there was a, a warning. Now, there hasn't been a repeat of that, from that premises. So we certainly can do that. I mean, we really do try and do this through education rather than prosecution. And we certainly have done a lot of work since two thousand and eighteen in that education role, particularly with our industrial premises. And I don't think, I'm happy to be proven wrong, that we've had another incident since then or that I'm aware of that has got to our local laws people.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further questions? Can I ask for a move it please? With councillor McCauley, second to councillor McPhee. Councillor McCauley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, just that these laws appear to clarify our position rather than make great changes. And they are sensible and understandable from our point of view and good work.
Look, obviously, local laws have to be amended occasionally. It comes down to a lot of the times is interpretation, people can interpret them in different ways. And as Miss Green said, this is an enforcement side of things, but obviously we try to educate the first instance all the time, try to educate the community. As we are making it Swan Hill a livable place for everyone. That's what local laws are about.
Any further speakers? If you guys would close the vote, councillor McCauley?
No, that's adequate.
Okay, we go to a vote. All those in favour? Ask unanimously. Item B twenty point three two, community infrastructure stimulus program. Mr Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council did receive notification from the state government of a sixty eight million dollar community sports infrastructure stimulus program about two weeks ago. And the application had to be in on Friday. So this report really is to let you know what, what applications the officers have submitted. The three options that are listed in this report, project number one, which is indoor recreation and leisure centre redevelopment, which is for the Swan Hill and Robben Vale leisure centers, as well as the Swan Hill indoor sport and recreation center. You'll note in the report that the total cost was listed as three point, three million dollars plus. Because at that time, we were still getting information, at the time of writing this report, we were still getting information back on the costing. It's actually, the total cost is estimated to be four point nine million dollars. So we've put in the grant for four point three million dollars. And that includes at Swan Hill, a, a, a new group fitness room and an expansion to the gym. And in Robben Vale, it's a new high ball court and expansion to the gym. So that brings, it's three point one million dollars in Robben Vale and one point five million dollars in Swan Hill. Plus three hundred thousand dollars for the stadium for some extra works at the Swan Hill stadium. The second project that's listed there is shared trails. And listed there was the Swan Hill to Lake Bogar active trail. We have discounted that one because it's, because it's not fully scoped. It is still in concept stage and would, and the estimate of two point six million dollars is, dare I say, a little bit of a stab in the dark at this, this stage. The third project there is the regional hub and essential facility upgrade, which is the creation of the Swan Hill showgrounds regional hub and the Robben Vale and Lake Bogar netball change rooms. The Swan Hill Football Club has done a lot of the work in regards to the showground project, including having plans drawn up and costed, as well as significantly completed the application for that project. And we have added to that project the change rooms in both Robben Vale and Lake Bogar. And a total cost for the whole project of four point five million dollars. Both these, we wouldn't be, just, we won't be successful in both. We may not even be successful in one of these. It's sixty eight million dollars across the state. We're hoping that we'd be successful in one of these projects. Really helps us proceed with implementing our master plans for our recreation precincts and our priority projects. And we're pretty excited that we've been able to pull together those two applications in two weeks. And hopefully we'll be successful. So the recommendation is to submit two separate funding applications. Guess we've already done that. Maybe it's to note that we have submitted two funding applications as outlined in the, in the report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Green. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillors?
This in relation to the shared trails, the Swan Hill Lake Bogar active trail. We currently have money in the budget to do that study, is that correct? I believe so, this year, isn't it, Mr Mayor?
I believe there's money there to undertake a more detailed design of the project.
Obviously, so it's not as if we're saying no to this. But it's just, it won't be ready in twelve months, that's why that project didn't get up. Yes, thank you.
Any more questions, councillors? There not being any, can I have a move it?
I'll move the motion, Mr Mayor. As, well, the, the recommendation should read, at the start, acknowledge the submission of two separate funding applications.
Yep. Everybody happy with that minor amendment, Pete?
Knowledge, submission of. Then two separate funding applications.
The second, please. Yes, councillor Benham? Do you wish to speak to the, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Obviously, with this COVID nineteen, there's a lot of economic stimulus coming out of both state and federal governments in relation to helping the economy go into the future. And sport and active recreation is an important part of all communities. It helps improve the mental health and we've been under a lot of stress being locked up for a long time in relation to that. So these sort of projects are going to be great for our municipality if we do get up. And I certainly acknowledge the two that we have put up, that I think they're well worth it and will make a big impact to our municipality in the future if we're lucky enough to get funding for either of them. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Benham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I think in the last six months, it's become very evident how important sport and recreation is to small communities. I'm thrilled to see the Robben Vale Leisure Center on, on one of these applications for a new high ball court and gym expansion. If we are, like councillor McPhee said, lucky enough to gain this funding, that alone stands to really change the community landscape in Robben Vale in an abundance of positive ways. So it was one of those applications that needed to be pulled together quickly. So well done to council officers for having these projects scoped and ready to go at a moment's notice.
Any further speakers? Yes, councillor Jeffrey?
Speak for, yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I just want to acknowledge the staff within council that have, particularly over the last three, four years, done a lot of work with the individual master plans that have been done for sporting grounds and for our facilities across the municipality. And have been included in our ten year major project plan. It's really allowed us as a council to be shovel ready for a lot of projects for when there's grants do come up. So just passing the congratulations to the, to the staff. And also to all the youth groups that generally are volunteers at those sporting clubs, but put in a lot of work to get, get those plans and projects up and running and on, on the list, ready to go. So hopefully they're successful in both, if not both. Thank you.
I just wanted to reinforce some of the previous comments that have been made. But to also just make a comment that I think that in a lot of the small rural areas, a lot of people at this still don't understand the importance of community plans and having things put into those plans. Because I think it's fairly obvious that there's not much small, smaller areas in here. And it's often because there's only certain people go to those meetings and the general community just don't understand the importance. And I think we need to take that on board. And they don't understand a lot about council procedures. It's been obvious on Facebook lately. I think we need to create a bit more information out there about how council operates.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor McCauley?
I'd just like to thank the state government for providing the funding opportunity. We're very grateful for the funding that's been provided in the last year and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, any speakers against? Councillor McPhee, would you like to close?
Yeah, I'd just close quickly, Mr Mayor. As, as been mentioned previously, a ten year major project plan is an important document for these opportunities when they come up. Situations like this arrive quickly and we have to be ready, as councillor Jeffrey said, shovel ready for projects. That's what the ten year major project plan is about. We have them ready there and this brings an opportunity to bring some forward. And aligned with our ten year financial plan, it puts us in a good place so we can adjust both of them. Because they are living documents, we can change them around as the opportunities arise for funding. So it's a great, I think that all staff that are involved in these major projects are very good. As councillor Young said, with community planning, this is probably a little bit above the community planning level, being a five million dollar projects, but the community planning is important. That's what feeds into our major project plan by all means. So I definitely encourage all community to understand the community planning. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. We now move to the vote. All those in favour of the recommendation? Ask unanimously. Item B twenty point three three, public convenience strategies, twenty twenty to twenty thirty. Mr McPhee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So we're bringing today to you the public convenience strategy for adoption. So that document has been developed over the past over twelve months. It had community engagement through the development and then a community consultation when the document was finalized. The intention and the benefit of having a strategy like this is similar to what the previous conversation was, to be ready with projects when we have the funding. Now, it's worth noting that this public convenience strategy is not budgeted at the moment. So this will become one of the documents to be presented to you when the budget for next year is put together. The only budgets that we have currently for public convenience are as part of the building and maintenance program. So this strategy will outline a good ten year proposed works program to be used for budgeting purposes. And obviously, when grants become available, to be able to accelerate some of those projects. We've received quite a good number of submissions, forty two submissions to this draft strategy when we went to the community over the last couple of months. You have, you have a view of all the feedback that we've received and all the recommendations. The recommendations either have been responded to and incorporated or responded to and not incorporated. And that's also clear in the report. So the main two, or the main differences between the draft strategy that went out for public consultation and the strategy that's here in front of you is the acceleration of the decommissioning of the Lake Bogar block number three toilet. The taking off the decommissioning list of the Kennel Club in Lake Bogar toilet facility because that's now going to be used for the equestrian center. The introduction of the George Lake Park toilet, which we received twelve submissions. I'm very pleased to see that it's one of the, the new assets that we can deliver for the community, hopefully with funds being available in the short term, and it is a short term priority. As you know, different strategies are linked together. So the public convenience strategy is linked with the playground strategy, the building strategy. So they all have to work together. Changes to one strategy or the creation of one strategy needs to be reflected in the other strategies, which means that the playground strategy will be amended and will come to council in the next few months. So, any questions?
Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Benham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a question relating to the submission received for the facilities requested at Weeman, which is a, a long term project dependent on Vic Roads. There's been some community concern recently. What, as a hypothetical, if, if a local resident had some land and some water able to be donated, does then that, could that be worked into this convenience strategy?
So through you, Mr Mayor, it, it is possible. So it's a very difficult question to ask because you need to know where the land is. You need to look at the parking, you need to get the permissions from Vic Roads. Because if you're creating a stop that can be used by heavy vehicles, it needs to be safe to be used. So it brings a lot of questions. It's not unfortunately an easy yes no answer. Obviously, having land is fantastic, but you find that there's a lot more planning controls that are more difficult than securing land in some of those more rural areas. In the short term, we are certainly going to look at making the toilets at the community hall more accessible. I understand that that's not quite addressing the need of the businesses, but it's one of the few things that we have control over. it's one of the few things that we have control over.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors?
Um, I've just got a comment to make on page one ninety-nine where it says, "A suggestion for facilities embedded does not fit the criteria." Forty-five minutes between facilities and the highways. Well, um, I think that's probably something that's not happening with a lot of the different areas in between. Nye West, one hill, it's not forty-five minutes. Um, the fact that, um, Woodwood doesn't have a playground. Um, I think it's just something that needs to be looked at in a bit more detail, I think.
Did you have a question, councillor, or just did you?
No, I just, yeah, yeah. The question is, could you look at it in a bit more detail, I suppose?
Um, true, Mr Mayor, we can look anything into more detail. Um, again, it's based on the criteria that we designed and we brought to council and the community. Um, if we were to use those criteria, this is the amount of money that we are looking at spending over the next ten years. And again, I'll just reinforce, it's still not budgeted. So if we, um, broaden the criteria to include more facilities, obviously the budget will either have to be higher or we'll have to do less facilities in the same period of time. So it's up to council and it's up to the community, the willingness to pay for the service that they'll receive. And how often is that service going to be used?
Thank you. Councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, with regards to the two submissions that have been received for lighting at Sisali Park, I understand that those facilities are locked at night. However, the park is open, there's no gates on that playground. Is there scope in the long term for solar lighting at that park, given that there's no power that goes to it?
I think, true, Mr Mayor, that will be a very interesting conversation to be had with the redevelopment of the playgrounds, um, asset management plan and the strategy. Um, at the moment, we provide no lighting in any of the parks and it's best practice not to have lights, so it's don't encourage playing at night. However, that could be something that we will be able to put out to the community and see what community feedback we get. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Uh, yes, Miss Beck, over there. The two point five four million over the ten years, that's obviously for maintenance, cleaning and renewal of facilities, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Not correct.
No, so this is, um, just to implement the strategy, so that doesn't take into consideration the day-to-day operations of the public conveniences.
So this is only just renewal and replacement?
That's correct, yes.
Or it's a, the cost of my time, isn't it, as I'm talking about again?
Absolutely. So again, the more facilities you have, the more maintenance you're having.
And, yes, councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. One more quick question with regards to some of the submissions for the skate park in Robinvale, those toilets. Given that we've just applied for funding for a leisure centre expansion and that was the direction given in the strategy that those toilets would be located in there, the concern from the community is that they won't be open all the time or that they will have to have access through the leisure centre. That's not the case, or is it the case?
So the recommendation, the strategy is where we can co-locate facilities to make sure that we have access that's out of ours, so it's not dependent on the building being opened. Um, whether all toilets or eight designated toilets who have access uh, from the outside, that's still to be decided. But also it's not, um, necessary that it will be open twenty-four seven, so it's the level of service of that toilet will also need to be decided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Benham, any further, yes, councillor McPhee.
You know, uh, yes, Miss Beck, over there. In relation to, um, damage on, with council property, where do toilets fit into that? Is that one of our major concerns and our major costs?
Um, I, I wouldn't say major cost, um, Mr Mayor.
In relation to, in relation to damage of camp, community, council property?
It certainly is one of the areas where we see a lot of vandalism. Um, in terms of the, the value, given that the asset is not that high of value, apart from some of the, um, fires and some of that kind of vandalism, um, everything else is replaceable, but as you're aware, we've saw, we saw all our toilet paper holders being stolen at the start of this Covid. Uh, and that is vandalism and that is a cost to the ratepayers. So we do see quite a bit and we try to do vandal proof, uh, proofing of those facilities.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? If not, can I have a move it, please?
I'll move. Ask further recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Can I have a say in that? Councillor Young. Thank you. May you speak to the motion, councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This has been a, a strategy that councils have been patiently waiting for a few years and which we've worked on and, uh, glad to see it came out to community consultation. It's some good feedback out from the community. Um, and it really sets a pretty plain English picture for the community about where our facilities currently are and with what, what we provide in them or what we will provide in the future. Uh, and I think it's a good, a good, good guideline on to what our toilets will look like in the future. Um, and I look forward to some of the renovations and new toilets going in, into the future. Thank you.
Councillor Young, would you like to speak to the?
Um, no, I'd just say congratulations. I think it is a, a good strategy and, um, we've obviously had a lot of consultation in a lot of areas. And once again, I'd probably make the comment that sometimes people don't understand about the processes and that we need to do a bit more work on that. Just communicating how things work.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any further speakers? Yes, councillor McKay.
Um, I, this strategy does show us the importance of planning and it does, um, it's an important step and important that the community understands how this process fits into then authorising us to apply for funding and then upgrade facilities and add facilities, et cetera. Um, I'd just like to note, to reassure the community, sometimes when it, it says, you know, decommissioning of a facility, it's for a plan at the end of that facility's natural life. Uh, it's not always that, that, um, facility will disappear immediately. Um, but council does have to be economical in the way they manage their assets and that a um, decommissioning of some toilet facilities does allow for the upgrade and improvement of other facilities that are more often used. So, um, just wanted to give a little explainer there of how it fits in and how important the work is, although it does seem sometimes so lengthy, it's important and gives us the basis for improving things.
Thank you. Any further speakers or any against? Okay, councillor Jeffrey, would you like to close the debate?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. We go to a neutral vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Item B twenty point three four, Urban Tree Management Plan. Miss Beck, go again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, as council is aware, that's the first urban tree management plan that we're putting in place. We have, we receive continuously questions from members of the community asking us about the tree management, whether it's the trees outside of their properties or the trees down the park. So, um, same with developers, it's really difficult for them to understand what their responsibilities are. Having a urban tree management plan makes sure that, um, how we make decisions is quite open and transparent, that people can understand the rationale behind decisions and that we can be consistent in decision-making. So this tree management plan is similar to other councils' tree management plans. Um, and it only covers the, the, the trees that are located within the seventy K town zones. So just to be very clear, this does not include the rural trees. Um, they're managed completely differently. It also, um, so it looks at several different, um, key areas. One is, um, how we protect trees, the other one is how we remove trees, what value we place on the trees, and then is also the replacement value and, um, the value that we attribute to the tree for the livability component of the townships. Um, they need the tree asset management in terms of how we do it, how we collect data, how we know which tree has been serviced when. Then it's the selection and planting of trees. Um, the tree roots and their interaction with infrastructure, whether it's our infrastructure or private infrastructure, the fauna that, um, inhabits those trees, and then how we engage with the communities. Um, the, this, the adoption of this plan will have no for the financial implications to council's budget because they reflect our current practice and our current budgets. So I guess, any questions?
Any questions, councillors? No questions? Can I have a move it, please? Move councillor Benham. Seconded councillor McPhee, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Benham?
Only very briefly. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, managing trees and making sure that we have enough trees um, and that, uh, we know where our important and significant trees are, I think is of vital importance, not only to our community but all communities. Um, so the fact that we have a strategy around this is fantastic. Thank you.
Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, it's important that we have a strategy around those trees. To make sure we're planting the correct trees. We live in a very hot climate up here, we've got to make sure we have the shade trees in the right areas and the trees are not impinging on our power lines in the urban areas. So it's a, it's an important document and it's what we do now, but it's put it in, put it in works. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Would you like to close the debate, councillor Benham?
No need.
Thank you too. Okay. All, uh, go to a vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item B twenty point three five, Roads and Community Projects Funding. Miss Beck, go again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That's another good news story in terms of, um, extra funding. This one comes through to the federal government. So as you will see at the end of May or the twenty-second of May, we were made aware that there is a funding allocation to Swan Hill of, uh, one point four three four million dollars. Um, they, there were a few criterias of what projects could be funded under this funding model. Um, some criteria still not quite clear, but, um, basically it covers, um, local roads and projects associated with roads and some community infrastructure. Um, given that we've received quite a lot of, uh, funding for roads over the past few months and there's more likely than not more funding coming for roads. Um, council offices put in a recommendation to include in this programme mainly facilities. Um, so we can spread, um, the works between local contractors that can do roads and also contractors that can work on facilities. The whole purpose of all this funding is, um, a stimulus for the economy. It's to keep businesses operational. And this way we are, uh, able to spread the benefits of, um, fundings like that across a multitude of contractors and tradies, apart from work that our staff can clearly do. Um, so we have, um, putting forward projects that are currently in the budget over the next two years. Um, a, a selection of projects that are from the building maintenance programme and that includes some, some minor works in Nye West, Nye, Robinvale and Swan Hill. Um, the public lighting, which is in our next year's budget. Um, the just approved, uh, toilet at George Lake Park is a priority. Um, then the Allen Garden netball court lighting upgrade, that was an, uh, asset failure that wasn't known, so it is unbudgeted, but it is a failure. Um, Robinvale pool heating, um, the Robinvale netball court change rooms, hopefully finishing up that project. Um, the top priorities from the missing link footpaths. Um, the shade sale over the playground at the, uh, recently constructed skate park and some roadside vegetation clearance in the rural roads to assist our farmers to move produce. So the consultation has occurred with the executive only and council has, um, seen this uh, at the last assembly. We understand that there's not much time to make decisions, but some of those funds also come at us, um, quickly with a very quick decision-making. Yet this is one where council can make a decision whether these are the projects that council supports for that round of funding.
Thank you, Miss Beck. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McKay.
Yeah, just a couple, Mr Mayor. Um, the roadside vegetation clearance, the hundred thousand dollars on that, we do that already in the budget. How much do we already spend on that in, in the budget process now? And what impact will that hundred thousand have?
Uh, true, Mr Mayor. Most of the projects that are here on the list are in the budget. So if we free that money in the budget, that will allow council to either bring other projects forward or to look at the rate cap potentially next year. So that will be a, an opportunity for council. We currently spend, um, I, I think about two hundred.
Two components, the urban tree maintenance, which is, and then there's the, um, rural roadside tree maintenance. The top, the top of my head, councillor, I think it's about two hundred thousand. It's been on rural roadside tree maintenance. It's substantially more on the, the discipline, of course. So this is a bit rough, if you can present.
All right. And just the missing link footpath strategy projects, which project is that?
So this.
The two hundred and twenty-fourth.
We looked at the, the top priorities in the missing link footpath strategies. So one of the priorities that we looked at was the anniversary drive footpath. Um, but it's, it's flexible. It just covers the, the top two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of projects. So it's, um, Stradbroke Avenue, Pritchard Street through the, um, to Swan Hill College, uh, was the second one on the list. I think that pretty much covered it. So it's two projects.
And, um, I've been made aware, councillor McKay, in relation to the footpath outside the Nye West Post Office, where does that fit into our missing links?
So, um, when we developed the missing link strategy, um, we went for community engagement. So we consulted with all the community groups and we also had the strategy for public consultation over a couple of months. Um, the community group identified three other top priorities for that township. Um, and that wasn't one of the projects that they identified as a top priority. It is one of the many projects in the active transport strategy. But the active transport strategy is more than ten times more footpaths than what the missing link has. It, it's all about, um, budgets and priorities. So each township had the ability to select their top three priorities and that wasn't one of them.
All right, just one last question. In relation to that, Nye West, the post office, you may not be able to answer this question, but, um, obviously the post offices as a hub for smaller towns because they have no postal service, they've got to go there and collect it. Do you know of any other towns outside the post office that, that doesn't have a footpath?
Um. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have to do it. I would.
All right, that's all. All right, so you might, I'm not going to worry about it. Thank you, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors?
I have a question.
Yes, councillor McKay.
Thank you. Um, in relation to the Robinvale netball court change rooms, um, that is also included in the other funding. The, the, um, sports, the community infrastructure stimulus.
I think that was like Bogar and.
It was a highball court.
There's an option two.
It's option two.
Oh, so that was not included. No.
No, it's just given an, an option that wasn't included in your final recommendation.
Uh, hang on.
Page one.
Um, page one ninety-five.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor.
I, I think it is project three.
It is, it is, it is one of the options, yeah.
So shall we formulate, possibly not right now, in the event that we achieve funding for the netball courts in one round, that we can have another project in the background of this? Because we've got it listed on files. I'm just alerting us to that possibility. Um, another question?
Yes, councillor Benham.
Um, the public lighting, could you explain that project then?
Um, I will attempt to do that, Mr Mayor. That's certainly not a project that is, um, one of my strengths. So public lighting, um, aims to replace the current inefficient lights with energy efficient lights. And it's a statewide project. So it's, um, it's driven through the Greenhouse Alliance. And, um, so it's looked at on a, a statewide basis and then each group looks at it locally. So it's, uh, it identifies in each council what are the lights that need to be upgraded to get the best benefit for, um, well, in the long term and also, uh, return on investment. So the return on investment on public lighting is around seven years, which may not be that great, but it's still a much better outcome to what we're getting now. Um, so the public lighting is split into a couple of different categories. One is the major roads and one is the Victorian, um, the Vic Roads roads, which traditionally have been funded through council and then being reimbursed through. which traditionally have been funded through council and then being reimbursed through Vic Roads. So that's a different stream of funding. When we looked at the public funding and when we've presented our budget submission last year to council, we did not include the Vic Roads projects because we didn't see prudent for us to be a bank for Vic Roads and for them to pay us over time. So this is the major roads lighting and on roads that we control. So we'll get the benefit from the energy savings. But that's as much as I can explain it.
Would I perhaps say a little bit more if I may, Mr Mayor? Practicality, there's about three main types of luminaires in street lighting. The most common we see, used to see around our, all our towns in Victoria was eighty watt sodium vapors. None of the street lighting is metered. It's just known how much electricity and eighty watt sodium vapor chews up to operate each night. So the electricity authority count, how many of these street lights we've got? And that's the basis on which the bill is sent in. This process is to replace those lights with new LED technology, which uses a fraction of the power of a sodium vapor or whatever the other two sorts are. And we will get ongoing savings from it. So our bill from the electricity provider for street lighting every year will reduce for every one of these that we replace. So it has an ongoing trailing benefit to the people of the municipality.
I understand.
Thank you. Any further questions councillors? Yes, councillor Benham.
Further to councillor Case, earlier question regarding the community infrastructure stimulus funding from the state government for the Robinvale Netball Court Change Rooms. And it's listed in here. What happens if we get both of these? If we're lucky enough to get both of these sets of funding?
So from, as far as I'm reading the guidelines, we can substitute one project for another as long as it complies with the category of the funding. The ones that we've just applied for, if we locked in what we are going to deliver, whereas the ones that we're talking about in my report is more flexible because it covers a broader range of projects. And it said that as long as the projects fit in the criteria, they will be funded. It's quite strong wording.
And we would return to council, bringing to you a good problem. Councillors, we need to change priorities both have been funded. We're suggesting a variation to the agreement, which would go back to the funding body for, to get their approval. And it would be a council decision as to which project was substituted.
Mr Green, would you have a comment?
I was just going to add, it also may allow council to reduce rate payers' contribution to any of the projects because we can leverage it both ways.
Councillor McCaughan, you have a question?
Yes. In regard to the Bromley Road beautification scheme, is it possible the rebating of that road is needed, but probably won't be done, won't be done in the current planning? Is it possible that should the Robinvale Netball Courts be funded with the other, we could use this funding that is here to complete that project? It's available on the first of July.
So true, Mr Mayor. I would not necessarily recommend to council to upgrade another authority's assets with funding being allocated to council. However, should council decide to do this as a donation to Regional Roads Victoria, that is okay. Maybe the contribution that council puts towards the works, that could be acceptable. But again, it's up to council, council can make that decision.
Councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As far as the Bromley Road beautification project goes, as it stands at the moment, isn't that almost what we've done? We've been funded to beautify the road and it's been reconstructed thus far and is due to be remarked for safety reasons and all the rest of it to be finalised. So isn't that what we've done essentially, up to this point?
We have project managed it on behalf of Regional Roads, but all the funding comes from the state.
Okay.
Fitz.
Okay, Fitz.
If I may, Mr Mayor, the purpose of the project was to beautify Bromley Road. It's not quite the main trick. Probably Robinvale's got two main streets, hasn't it? Bromley Road and Pearon Street. So Regional Roads Victoria's focus is to get traffic from destination to destination, which is often through towns. This was to beautify the town, also for the people of Robinvale and the traders on that street as much as the migrant public. Our focus has really been on the residents of Robinvale. So it's not, the project that we've done is not really about trying to get traffic through. It happens anyway, it's about beautifying the town.
Thank you. Any further questions councillors? Yes, councillor McCaughan.
Another couple, Mr Mayor. The previous one, the community infrastructure project required a three million and a four hundred million project. And then this one, one hundred million dollars. Are we going to be able to get all this work done with our already ten year budget project plan?
We're certainly pushing it and if more funding comes our way, it's not just us, our contractors are also struggling. So we try to be realistic and that's why we're trying to spread the work as much as possible to get different skill sets utilised. Otherwise, no. We're not the only council in this position. Everyone has a lot more work than what they have resources to deliver.
And just, you mentioned before, I think the money from this, the money we spent on this is one point four million dollars. Obviously frees up money in the budget to do those other projects that we were talking about before, maybe other Missing Link footpaths and that.
Any further questions councillors? There being none, can I have a mover please? Can I have a mover? Yes, move councillor McCaughan.
Alter the motion.
What are you moving councillor McCaughan?
There is no motion at this point, just a recommendation, sir.
Yeah, a recommendation. I have a mover as further recommendation.
Oh, move as further recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Can I have a second please? Councillor Jeffrey, you wish to speak to the recommendation, please councillor McCaughan. Moving amendment.
Yes. I would like to move an amendment.
Ah, yes?
I would like to see included in this list of funding, given that it is a flexible, in a way, amount to a project included to improve the footpath along Lloyd Street in Nye West from where it is, where the whole entirety of where there is no footpath from Station Street to the edge of the preschool. It is a safety issue. The population of Nye West is quite a lot larger than is listed in official records. It's a very busy town with migrant workers, an elderly population, they use that pedestrian.
Mr Mayor, just, we're asking for a motion on the amendment.
Sorry, sorry, yes. I apologize, yes. So I'd just like to amend it to include fifty thousand dollars to improve that footpath as a project.
We have the start and end, councillor McCaughan, you mentioned a couple of things.
Yes.
From...
Yes. Sorry.
From the preschool to Station Street.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were... And to add to the, is this putting on? That coun... amend, thank you. That the link that council fund a project to complete the footpath between the preschool and Station Street on Lloyd Street in Nye West. Yeah, to the extent of fifty thousand dollars.
I may be pedantic, Mr Mayor, if I can. Because that's not what I think councillor McCaughan is asking for. You're not asking for councillor to fund this, you're asking for that project to be added to the list.
Added to the list of funded projects.
So can I suggest that the amendment is as per the recommendation, but adding that project to the list? And then what I talked about when we're taking out.
Thank you.
The footpath from preschool to Station Street.
Okay.
So let's see, I just heard a recommendation, is it, let's start talking.
The amendment is the council had an additional project to complete the footpath of Station Street, Nye West, to the list of projects. Okay. No. Yes, sorry, Sharon, can you remove two of the list of projects and put it at the end? None of them, it's meant to go at the end of it. Yeah.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, do I have a second? I'll second amendment, yes. We have a second, councillor Benham.
Can I just have a clarification on that, Mr Mayor?
Yes.
I believe the initial recommendation is going to include that as well, so it's everything else as well. What we're doing is adding, so that sort of adds on to the initial recommendation.
I think that's the intent of the...
So the initial recommendation goes on top of that as well. So the initial recommendation and council added an additional project.
Yeah.
That's my understanding, is that councillor McCaughan?
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, Mr Mayor, council really needs to have a conversation about what projects are being chopped out because it's a defined grant allocation of one point four mil. So if we're adding fifty thou, we need to pull fifty thou out of something else on the list.
Sure. I would suggest, is it acceptable for me to speak at the moment?
Have we decided this, councillor McCaughan?
Councillor McCaughan is moving an amendment, you really need to state the amendment.
Yep.
So by so doing, you're going to tell us which project you're recommending be reduced or removed?
As part of the amendment.
Sure. I think at this point, I would suggest the public lighting, it is flexible. It's not a full project with a defined scope.
So reduce public lighting to one hundred and fifty thousand.
It's a full project and it's budgeted for and it's a statewide project, so we can't really defer it.
Okay then, roadside vegetation clearance.
Reduce roadside vegetation clearance to fifty thousand.
That's what we're saying. The amendment, as it's written on the screen and following the words it should follow, and remove the amount of roadside vegetation by fifty thousand dollars. Need to know that you're happy with this wording, councillor McCaughan, when it comes up. To your amendment.
Reduce.
You haven't got that?
Yep, that's fine.
Councillor Benham, you second the motion, are you happy with that?
I'm happy with that, thank you.
Right, yeah, would you speak to the motion, councillor McCaughan?
Sure, thank you. Firstly, roadside vegetation clearance.
Mr Mayor, just one word. With an amendment, you've got to speak to the amendment, see if the amendment, move the amendment, then it becomes the initial motion. You've got to vote on the amendment first.
Vote on the amendment.
So you've only spoke to the amendment at this point in time.
That's what I'm speaking to.
Yes, we're speaking to the amendment.
I'm speaking to the amendment.
Speaking to the amendment.
Speaking to the amendment, thank you councillor McPhee. I am not at all intending to reduce the amount of roadside vegetation clearance. However, I am hopeful that there may be some extra funding available, given that we've put in application for netball funding to two different funding bodies. So I'm hopeful of that and very conscious that roadside vegetation is important. However, the footpath in front of the Nye West Post Office is dangerous. It's not very safe, it's not fit for purpose. And I think this would be an extremely valuable project to that community. It's a glaring gap in their presentation of their town, but much to the forefront, it is in fact not safe. Nye West, as I stated previously, at the wrong moment, has a population far higher than is recognised. It's got a lot of migrant workers. People are using the post office and they're using it a lot by foot. Thank you very much. So I do encourage people to accept and vote on this recommendation. I do have that from the community. The Nye West community with the councillor was the most incredibly highly attended coffee with a councillor, sorry, indicating a high degree of engagement with council and a lot of hopes and aspirations for that community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I think the disamendment for the works in front of the Nye West Post Office is a safety issue, first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the amendment? Councillor McCaughan.
I'll explain to Mr Mayor just quickly. Question I asked Mr McCaughan before we fitted into the community planning. It wasn't their first priority, I understand that. But like I mentioned before in the question, the post office in those rural towns are like a community hub. They don't have postal delivery, so everyone's going to the post office. Nye West is a larger, one of our largest small towns within our municipality. And we've got a lot of elderly people accessing that facility. So I think it's about making it safe for them. And I think even though it's lower on the community planning list, by doing these projects, I think it's not going to make that much of an impact to the tree clearance. And I think it's a better outcome for our municipality and hopefully free up money to do further works in those other areas into the future. Thank you, Mr McCaughan.
Any further speakers for, any against amendment? Okay, we're now voting on the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment? Carried unanimously. The amendment now becomes the motion. And councillor McCaughan? Can I just speak to the motion?
Yes, I've said enough, thank you very much.
Councillor Benham?
No, no, thank you.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any further speakers, any speakers against the motion? Or move to vote? All those in favour of the amended motion? Thank you. All in favour, carried. Question C, Simon Seale report, C twenty point nine, Mr McCaughan.
Likely a little bit more straightforward, this report, Mr Mayor, well seen. Council Seale's been used on eight documents since the last council meeting. Two were implementing the instruments of delegation that were being previously reported and adopted by council. There were five variations of lease for leases at the Swan Hill aerodrome that had hanger leases. And there was one section one seven three agreement where a private asset has now been located in a road reserve on Landing Road, Happy Valley.
Questions?
Just a question, Mr Mayor. Just in relation to those variations of the aerodrome hangers. Obviously it had nothing to do with any other topics in the agenda.
Good question, thank you for your Mr Mayor. No, they are part of the normal course of business of renewing and reviewing our leases. We have a number of those that you will see rattled through the agendas as they come back from leases.
Any further questions councillors? There being none, can I have a mover please? Yes, further recommendations? Seconded, seconded by councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Just proceed, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. There being none, through the speakers, as it is procedural, called to a vote, all those in favour? Unanimously. Item C, twenty point one zero, councillor assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items.
Yeah, again, Mr Mayor, just procedural report listing the councillors' attendance at the assemblies and the items on those agendas for each of the assemblies that occurred since the last council meeting. So recommending the council note the contents of that report.
Thank you, Mr McCaughan.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you, move those further recommendations by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor McPhee. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Section D, notices of motion, heads of agreement Australian Aviation Alliance. Councillor McCaughan.
Having given due notice, I move that council withdraw its offer to enter into a heads of agreement with Australian Aviation Alliance, AVN two nine six three seven five one nine seven eight one, to negotiate the establishment of a flight school at the Swan Hill Aerodrome.
Do we have a second? Seconded councillor McPhee. Do you speak to the motion please councillor McCaughan?
This issue has caused considerable community angst and concern in regard to the possible implications of council entering into negotiations and where that could lead. Um, council has taken note of this community concern as, by moving this motion, I am seeking to make it clear and for the council to make it clear that negotiations have ceased and that our offer is no longer open. I would like to commend our CEO in that negotiation, negotiations did have their intended consequence in that was not, proceedings did not go on. Um, however, I think it's important that we remove the heads of agreement from still being on offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee, would you love to speak?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. As councillor McKay said, yes, this has caused a lot of angst within the community. The heads of agreement was only moved to be pursued with, it was never agreed that we were going to accept them into the aerodrome. It was just giving your CEO an opportunity to talk further with this company. And when we put the concerns, a lot of the community had about flight times, flight paths, the cost of the ratepayer, put that to them and expected them to do a bit more, they pulled out of the, out of the agreement. Um, and it's appropriate that we pull out of the agreement as well. We currently are spending quite a bit of money on the aerodrome, which the CEO touched on in a lot of the questions, in public question time. It's about making our aerodrome a safe and operational condition, we must do that, we've got to keep it. It's like council own all our roads within our municipality, but everyone gets to use them, we've got to maintain them in a safe condition as well. The same thing goes for the airport, although it's owned by council, there's other roads, the airport can be used by anyone. It's used on a daily basis for your postal service and we're flying doctors are in and out of here all the time. So it is important to this municipality to have a safe and operational airport, um, because of the connectivity to the bigger centres like Melbourne and those places. We are changing the way we do our transport, the way we move around. You talk about our, our goods and services up here, our manufacturing, they've got to be able to, opportunity to not only bring people in to see what we do up here, but also to be able to get stuff out of here in a quick manner. So it's about maintaining this aerodrome in a safe operational condition. So in the budget, it's around figures of about two point three million dollars, we were going to spend anyway. These are all upgrades to runways and taxiways, these are going to happen. As the people see, we've just recently received from the federal government, another one point two million dollars to spend on the aerodrome. And this will be discussed at later times to establish exactly what is going to be, hasn't been decided at this point in time, where it's going to be spent, but that's something that's, we're fortunate enough, again, we've seen a couple of reports in this agenda already, where both the state and federal government handed money to us to make us more resilient into the future. So this, all the work that is going on there is separate to the, the flying school coming in there. It is a public aerodrome, there are a number of flying schools coming in here. We will, as a council, I think we need to look at future payments, the way we can get money out of people landing at our aerodrome. Currently, they land freely, but we've got to consider the local users of that aerodrome too. They've been there for many years without paying a cent. So it's about getting that balance right, to make sure that we get the, still have the access to our postal service, still have the access to flying doctors and all those necessities, but also make sure that we get some value for money out of the casual users of the aerodrome. But that's a bit of work going to be probably undertaken by the next council, because we're that close to the end of this term, but I think it's something they need to investigate, which I'm sure they'll be looking at, and make it another source of income for our council. But it's important, as I said initially, the money being sent is about making it a safe and operational condition. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers? Yes, councillor Jeffrey?
I'll speak for the motion, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, the councillor McKay and councillor McPhee have covered off a few areas I didn't want to speak in prior before, but let's make the picture big while we're around the public discussion that has occurred. And for me as a councillor, the aviation, Australian Aviation Alliance approached council eleven months ago, probably twelve months, but eleven months ago now roughly, about leasing or wanting to negotiate leasing at the airport. So in order for that discussion or negotiation to, to kick off, we as a council had to authorize the CEO to enter into negotiations. And we did so with the heads of agreement, we've set out council's position of what we thought would be, or could be, part of any arrangement that would come out of a lease. There were many factors that weren't included in that, such as the flight times, the hours of operation, the flight paths, but the heads of agreement were focused more around the buildings required, how those buildings could be built if they were, and any, through those lease agreements, if we got to that point, what renovation, what the lease fee and what the rates and charges would be. But, um, as is publicly known, the, what conditions contained in the heads of agreement weren't favorable to the airport, so they didn't want to sign it and enter into negotiation. So I think that really sets a picture about how committed they were or were going to come in here. And even though if the, if council do vote in favour of withdrawing it, it doesn't stop them approaching us again, and any future council would have to go through a similar process to kick it off. So if council do agree to withdraw, it does indicate that we won't be negotiating any further lease with them. Doesn't mean that they won't be interested again, but that's a decision for any future council to make when it comes up. Yeah, I think that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
Um, I just wanted to say that credit should go to the councillors and the CEO for recognizing that this process needed to go to the heads of agreement. I think one of the things that we're subject to at the moment is a lot of misinformation out there in the community, and this has been demonstrated through this process as well. I have been disappointed that some of the opposition has had racial undertones. I think we're a multicultural society now with many different races and cultures, and we shouldn't be subjected to that sort of discussion. It's also unfortunate that some of the topics and issues that have been introduced through the issue and the debate could further impact on some of the development and expansion opportunities, such as increasing passenger services and also export opportunities from the region. So I think we just need to be aware as a community that there will be other opportunities that may come up, and we should need to consider them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor McKay, would you like to close the debate, please?
I think Swan Hill is undoubtedly a proudly multicultural community, and it's one of our great strengths, um, and I'd like to acknowledge that. Uh, I think also to acknowledge that this proposal had much greater implications than we originally realised, and through community feedback, we also unpacked a lot of these issues and realised how many questions we would have to ask ourselves and have our community participate in the future. Our residents and our ratepayers have to be our main concern. They elect us, they elect us and they pay us to think of their interests and their, they are the best investors that we have. They are here and they are the best investors for our community. We have a positive future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Right here, we'll now go to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? Thank you. Asked unanimously. Section P, third items not included in the agenda. Do we have any? However, we don't. Section F, to consider an order on councillor reports. Who's first today?
Nothing to report, this day.
I think councillor Jeffrey's first, he's finished. Okay, thank you, councillor Jeffrey, councillor Young?
Got anything on it? Took down the senior leadership committee and the visit to county settlement today.
Thank you, councillor Benham?
Um, I've got very little to report either, apart from some outplacement site visits and meetings. That is.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Very quiet, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee?
Yes, Covid's kept us very quiet, Mr Mayor, while they had done the order quitting at the useful management committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, the same, the same. Apart from going out to the Nye West community to look at their footpath and discuss some other items with one other person as allowed, I have only participated in our assemblies and the county settlement meeting today.
Thank you. And the Covid quiet is also with me as well, a virtual meeting with the North West Municipalities Association, and another one with the Murray River Group of Councillors.
Thank you.
So you're looking at the camera needs a good information that we close the meeting?
Yeah, now, we will be closing the meeting to the public